Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the combined October Board of Education meeting tonight. Meeting calls ordered at 7:03. Please bow your head for a moment of silence. Thank you, please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Superintendent Fury, I believe we have special recognitions tonight?
We do. Tonight, we have several high school students in attendance who deserve to be publicly recognized for their recent outstanding accomplishments. We will continue with our recognition of our 2019 AP Scholars. Overall, 111 Newton County School System high school students were named AP Scholars for their outstanding success on their AP exams last school year. While many of those were graduates of the class of 2019, we had a very large number of sophomores and juniors earn this prestigious recognition as well. So many that we've had to spread the recognition across three meetings to accommodate all of them. Tonight, we will recognize our 2019 AP Scholars from Eastside High School. In order to earn AP Scholar status, students must complete three or more AP exams with scores of three or higher. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mrs. Shaquilla Henderson Baker, who is our board chairwoman. Kenley Boyd. Kenley is a senior at Eastside High School, and she was named a 20 AP Scholar. Congratulations, Kenley. Madison is also a senior at Eastside High School and the Newton College and Career Academy, and she earned AP Scholar status in 2019 as well. Congratulations, Madison. Kinsley Dozier. Kinsley is a senior at Eastside High School, and she was named a 2019 AP Scholar. Zach Faith. Zach is a senior at Eastside High School, and he earned AP Scholar status this year as well. Congratulations, Zach. Mackenzie Guerrero. Mackenzie is a senior at Eastside High School, and she was also named a 2019 AP Scholar. Davion Haynes. Davion is a senior at Eastside High School, and he too was named a 2019 AP Scholar. Bethany Larson. Bethany is a senior at Eastside High School, and she earned AP Scholar status as well. Congratulations, Bethany. Marie McBride. Marie is a senior at Eastside High School, and she too was named a 2019 AP Scholar. Congratulations, Marie. Cashell Miller, who is a senior at Eastside High School and Newton College and Career Academy, earned AP Scholar status as well. And in her absence, we can congratulate her. Congratulations, Cashell. Bailey Aller. Bailey is a senior at Eastside High School, and she too was named a 2019 AP Scholar. Logan Putnam. Logan is a senior at Eastside High School, and he was named a 2019 AP Scholar as well. Jet Rawls. Jet is a junior at Eastside High School, and he earned AP Scholar status this year as well. We also had several Eastside AP Scholars who could not attend this evening due to band and athletic events taking place in the district. But we'd also like to recognize them at this time for their outstanding accomplishment. Nolan Avery, Hannah Brooker, Pierce Downs, Ava Glover, Tiana Huff, Wesley Hudgens, Miranda Johnson, Duncan Jordan, and Nyla Wright are seniors at Eastside High School, and they each were named 2019 AP Scholars. Let's congratulate them as well. It's also important to note that each of the students recognized this evening still have the opportunity to earn additional and possibly higher recognition in 2020 when they take the AP exams as juniors and/or seniors. I'd like to take this opportunity just to thank our administrative team, who is present, Mr. Buffett's in the back. We appreciate that the staff at Eastside High School and the College and Career Academy set the conditions such that our students have the environment in which to excel and grow in their academic prowess. And congratulations to all of you as AP Scholars. It's certainly an accomplishment. I am a former AP student, so I know the workload and the dedication and commitment to studying and to writing and to memorizing and to doing all that is necessary to earn this type of designation. So we're extremely proud of all of you. Congratulations again at this time.
So I'd like to thank the parents for all of the support that you give to your kids. And I'd like to say congratulations again to the kids. You guys are one step ahead of the game. It is really impressive to get college credit and to pass those AP courses, the AP exams. So continue to do great work. And if I can have all of the family members to please stand. And all of the support people, please stand if you're not family. And students, I want you to turn around and take a look at these people in the room. This is your support system. Always be willing to lean on them. Always thank them for everything that they do for you guys. And always go back to them for advice. They're going to steer you in the right direction. They got you here thus far. So thank you for all that you do. Let's give our parents, our family, support a hand. At this time, we are going to continue with our meeting. But because you are AP Scholars, I'm pretty sure that you're still taking other AP courses, which means that you are really studious and serious about your work. So if you would like to be dismissed so that you can go home and do your homework and study and look at advanced things that you need to look at, you may do so now. But if you would like to stay, we would love for you to stay.
As everybody pours out of the room.
Okay, so we'll continue public participation. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Anybody know, there he is, Dr. Barr.
Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
In the financial report, the special purpose local option for education sales tax distribution for August was $1,204,811, which is a decrease of $55,733 from the previous month. The average for the first 55 months of Eastplus Four Collections is $995,066. Item two, the title ad valorem tax collection for August was $536,055. And finally, the fiscal year is 25% complete, and the rate of expenditures is 25.01%. This higher rate of expenditures is due to expenses that must be paid in the beginning months of the fiscal year, such as insurance premiums and software license fees. Also, the financial statement is included for your review, and that concludes the financial report.
Okay, you can go ahead with the next report. The strategic plan, you're gonna do that one? Because we're gonna take them all together as A, B, and C.
Oh, okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Under student achievement and success from the superintendent's report, to increase the capacity of staff to deliver and support high-quality instruction, instructional technologists have conducted 67 trainings with teachers and administrators during planning after-school and before-school hours in September. Because all staff members deserve a safe, positive, and supportive environment, ViewPath, our camera system, and Canvas, our learning management system, were the focus of these trainings. In addition to training teachers and administrators, the instructional technology team arranged training for the school technical assistants, otherwise known as STAs, in a special one-half-day workshop in September. The STAs were trained on the keyboarding without tiers, Savari, Montage, and ViewPath systems, as well as Microsoft Office 365 products to help increase productivity and safety. Under high-quality workforce, new early intervention program, or otherwise known as EIP, teachers and some elementary instructional coaches began a year-long training to earn a math endorsement for their teaching certification. The math endorsement is through Griffin Risa and will help support the teacher's knowledge of math instruction and how to support students in closing math achievement gaps. Under culture, climate, and communication, the special education department, families, and students attended the Special Olympics night at SunTrust Park for a Braves game. Special Olympics Georgia donated the tickets to students, volunteers, and their families. And finally, site work continues under organizational and operational effectiveness. Site work continues at the replacement Eastside High School. Clearing is 95% complete. Stormwater infrastructure is approximately 50% complete, and mass grading for the building site has begun. And that is the superintendent's report from the strategic plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Are you doing enrollment report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, will you go ahead?
FY '20 current enrollment as of October 17th is 19,518 students, which is a decrease of 236 students from this time last year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I need a motion to remove, to move the superintendent reports forward, please.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. The floor is open for questions, discussions, or concerns. Are there any for A, B, or C? Having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, five zero. Old business, we don't have any new business. Dr. Barr?
Yes, ma'am. In item A, the superintendent recommends the contract for project management services be awarded to Ascension Program Management LLC of Monroe, Georgia. Total cost will be $124,000. As background, request proposal C-958-02, a solicitation for contract for construction management services, was opened on September 25th, 2019. The solicitation prescribes a turnkey solution for project management services focusing on the construction of the high school. The awarded vendor will work in conjunction with architectural personnel and school system administrators throughout the programming, planning, construction, and post-construction phases of the project. The project manager will ensure that all elements of the work meet the required quality, design, schedule, and budget goals and standards. Five vendors submitted proposals in response to this solicitation. The vendors' proposal documents reviewed, evaluated, and scored via a multi-stage process. The vendors and their scores are provided for your review. Upon review, as I mentioned, it was determined that Ascension Program Management offered the best value to the school system. This relates to strategic goal area four organizational and operational effectiveness, and the response document is also included for your review. Madam Chair, that concludes item A.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to move A forward, please?
So maybe.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. The floor is now open for discussion or questions concerning A. No one has any?
No.
Okay, I'll call for the question, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you. B, Dr. Barr?
In item B, the superintendent recommends the approval of the use of the gymnasiums and green spaces at select schools by the Newton County Recreation Commission for youth basketball, football, and cheerleading. As background, the Newton County Recreation Commission has requested the use of the gymnasium and green spaces at select schools for youth basketball, football, and cheerleading. They are a recognized partner and thereby exempt from paying fees for the use of facilities. The schools' dates and times are provided there for your review, and this relates to goal area four organizational and operational effectiveness, and that is item B.
Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to move B forward, please?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved in second. Floor is open for discussion, any questions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you. C?
In item C, the superintendent recommends the scoreboard needed for Alcovee High School be purchased from Daktronics of Brookings, South Dakota. The total price for the scoreboard solution is $38,499. As part of the capital improvement plan for FY '20, it was determined a new scoreboard was needed in the main gym at Alcovee High School. A review of options in the marketplace led to Daktronics Equipment. They've been, done good work for us. They're an industry leader of digital display solutions. The new scoreboard system will include a four-sided center scoreboard, replacement of two existing wall-mounted scoreboards, and a new central wireless control system. School system utilized a contract managed by Omea Partners to procure the scoreboard, and this relates to strategic goal area four operational, organizational, and operational effectiveness. That is item C.
Okay, may I have a motion to move C, please?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Floor is open for discussion or questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Have you reviewed the features?
Yes.
Have you sent us with the principal and the AD, coach?
Yes, sir. We had a conversation with the principal. I know he was very excited about it. We have also addressed the possession arrow issue in this one, so that that will not be carried forward.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The possession arrow issue would not be a problem with this scoreboard either.
Well, I hope it's not a problem.
Right.
But based on the information I read, I cannot determine whether possession arrow would be viewed from, other than from one location.
Right. And, Mr. here, do you know the answer to that? Or no? If you don't know, don't, I'm all right. I'll have to find out, but I know that the possession arrow is on the score table. Is that correct? And on the two side, on all scoreboards.
The wall mount, the wall and the center?
Right. And they'll all point the same way. It's all-inclusive system, so it's all connected together.
Y'all know Mr. Johnson go to the game, so don't say it. It's not gonna happen.
That is my understanding.
I'm not talking about the bonus error, I want to make that clear. I'm talking about the possession error.
Possession error.
It's in five locations.
Right.
Each side of the scoreboard.
Okay.
And from the management center.
Right.
Okay, why not a player center feature?
Okay, I don't know, we can check on that.
What that is, the list of the players with the fouls and the scores. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, all right. Okay, we can see if we can add that.
And this wasn't discussed with the principal?
I do not, that question was not asked, no. I don't remember hearing that.
The names or their numbers? Just their numbers, their jersey numbers?
Well, they can go, it's how you want it. I mean, that's why I like to have the principal and the coaches involved to select the features that they want, whether it's name and points, or name, number, and points. There's several options to go with.
Okay.
I think you've done that.
We did talk to the principal.
Who was the athletic director, so he oversaw the whole thing, so.
So what you tell me is they didn't want it? Or did they know it was available?
They did not pose that question, but I can go back to them, and if it can be added for a reasonable cost.
I was about to say, because that sounds pricey.
Right, yeah, we can do that, yeah.
We'll bring it back and let you know, let you look at it.
I noticed I come into you, you made in this, in the supporting data, that you made reference to the company that's doing the work, and you complimented them in doing the work at Sharp Stadium.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, I don't see how you can compliment them when the work is not done.
It was on time, on schedule, and, and cost was correct, so.
So we had a schedule?
Yes, we had a schedule. And I'm trying to get this scoreboard installed for you per your request for basketball season. I'm trying to expedite it as quickly as I can.
I'm glad to see you make an effort.
I appreciate it, sir.
Okay. I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Oh, you have a question?
I just wanted to make sure, I'm just trying to go through the attachment A.
Okay.
Addendum or whatever, it is, like, all of the labor and installation is included?
That's correct.
Because it seems like there's some exclusions that are.
Installation of the new equipment and removal of the existing equipment is included in the cost.
And we've already tested the structure to make sure it's supported.
Looked at all of that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
They can call it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's a separate.
Okay, five zero, thank you. D, oh, you're still with us, Dr. Barr?
I'm still, yes, ma'am. In item D, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract awarded to McPherson Companies Incorporated at Atlanta, Georgia, for the utilization of a fuel card system for the transportation department be awarded for an additional term. The effective date of the renewal will be October 25, 2019, with an expiration date of October 24, 2020. Estimated contract value is $790,000. Fuel cards, as background, the fuel cards allow drivers to refuel at the service center and/or designated pre-approved sites located along driver's routes within their zone. Those buses, for which it is more effective to fuel off-site or identified and designated to do so, the rest of the buses refuel at the service center. In FY '19, the use of the fuel cars, fuel card saved approximately $27,800 in fuel costs and $35,500 in labor costs compared to requiring all buses to return to refuel at the service center. School system utilized a contract managed by Omea Partners, a national purchase cooperative to assess, access the fuel card program. This relates to strategic goal area four organizational and operational effectiveness. That is item D, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. You may have a motion for D, please?
So maybe.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion, any questions?
Sure. Just, is the contract for two years? Because I'm getting, it just seems to be different on the.
It's a, it's a state contract, so the term could be different, but you're only approving for the use of it for a one-year term.
Okay, even though, so we're going through March 31st, 2020?
If, are you looking at the state contract? If that's the state contract, then that's what we would be doing.
The National IPA?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
But you're only approving it for that one-year term for us to use it.
Thank you for the question.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Having none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you. All right, Dr. Barr?
In item F, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and dis.
You're moving too fast.
Okay.
He's ready to go.
Oh, E, there we go, okay.
Do another one, do another one.
A, B, C, D, E.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take item E, for those of you following along. And item E, I was real excited, too, because I thought that was it. The recommendation is for the superintendent, from the superintendent, to renew a contract for print management services to Rico USA of Malvern, Pennsylvania. The effective date will be October 30th, 2019, and the expiration date will be October 29th, 2020. The estimated contract value is $214,000. Over the last year, the school system's copy center, located at the Newton College and Career Academy, has averaged 768,151 copies per month at a lower cost possible than at schools or facilities, while maintaining our goal of a three-day turnaround. Since the program was initiated, the school system has realized an aggregate savings of approximately $46,800 from rightsizing the fleet at schools and facilities. The estimated cost for the program is $214,000, and this relates to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. That is item E.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for E, please?
So maybe.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any questions or discussions? Okay, having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero? Okay, one more, Dr. Barr.
Item F, superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy, and that concludes item F.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for L, please?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Dr. Thomas?
You need me to stay up here?
Excuse me, I have a question.
You have a question?
Oh.
Or Dr. Barr?
Yes, Dr. Barr, one question.
Yes, sir.
Have you decided what type or kind of cameras that are gonna be used at the stadium?
No, sir, we're still, I'll have a separate conversation with you about that, answer that question for you. But we have, but we had a very successful meeting with.
But we don't schedule, all right.
But we had a very successful meeting. Let me tell you about successes. We had a very successful meeting, not with this microphone, but, but with the Newton College and Career Academy, and they think they have some students that are interested in helping us with that program, so we're excited about that partnership. Madam Chair, that's all I have for this evening.
I don't know about the partnership.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the approval of the attached contract with Mr. Michael Selkis for professional learning and support services for the 2019-20 school year. The total purchase is $114,800 to include expenses. Rationale, the district and select schools will utilize the services provided by Mr. Michael Selkis to support the district's strategic goal area three, culture, climate, and communication, with a focus on performance objective one, provide equitable and inclusive learning and work environments at all levels of the district, and the action steps outlined thereafter in initiative one, assess and provide equitable services to subgroups, and in initiative three, plan cultural sensitivity and responsiveness training. The district leadership team and select schools will participate in a series of workshops that offer a framework and customizable tools to help identify and assess the way district and school policies, climate, classroom structure, and teaching practices can accelerate learning for underserved, underserved and struggling students while supporting high-performing students. This board item relates to two goal areas, the strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area three, culture, climate, or culture, climate, and communication. You have the supporting document, which is a proposal from Mr. Selkis, and the funding source is FY '20 General Funds Function Code 2210, object code 300, and this concludes item G.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Is there a motion to move this forward?
So maybe.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. The floor is now open for discussion or questions and concerns. Are there any regarding item G?
Have the selection of the schools been made?
Yes, it, yes, they have been.
What were the criteria in selecting those schools?
Well, basically, we looked at the student data, and we determined which schools had a discrepancy in the data and would be supported best by having cultural sensitivity and responsive training. We also looked at the principals and the administrative staff to see, one, which schools were interested and already ready for this type of professional development and support. And then from there, we looked at, you know, with the planning group, we discussed all of these things to see which schools were interested, as well as looking at the data, looking at the interest level and the support level, and, you know, made a selection to start with four schools, because we're just piloting four schools. So over the course of the next, you know, two or three years, all schools will participate in the training session, but we just started with the four schools that showed the strongest interest. As. as well as had the data that would support the need for having this type of training.
I have a question. In selecting these particular schools, if you found one that needed it, but didn't want to participate, why would we let them make that call?
Well, based on the information that we looked at, one, going back to the strategic plan, going back to our summer leadership retreat, where we started off talking about implicit biases, looking at culturally responsive teaching practices, and then working with all of the leaders, we did have a certain pool of principals that have started the work or had a strong interest in the work. And that's how we got to these four schools, and we solidified selecting those schools based on the data. So there were some schools that were still interested, but they also said they needed to have a little bit more time because, far as preparation and learning, because the other thing that Mr. Selkis is going to do for the district is, he's working with the district leadership team, so all, what, eighty, ninety of us across the district, to include the instruction, I mean, include the assistant principals, he will be working with us on professional development, so that the district leadership team can understand what type of leadership and instructional practices can be improved, so that they can look at the information that we learn to see how to best approach this topic at the school. So to answer, I hope I've answered your question, these are the four schools that have surfaced to the top, that have expressed an interest in having this level of professional learning, as well as support, coupled with the data, and.
And the need.
And the need, absolutely.
And they'll be champions for the work, and so they'll be able to be spokespeople moving forward as we begin the selection process for, and we also want to try out my, Mr. Selkis's work, too, with a select group first, to see if this is really the direction we want to go with him as the leader. And then we'll have the four schools, and then they will be champions as we move forward into the next school year, and the subsequent years will pull in the other schools. But everybody will have this workshop over the course of time. There is no opting out.
Did I miss the names of the schools?
They're not in there.
Okay.
It's something like this, this is a turnover type, in terms of the schools. Why, maybe the wrong question. Should we consider training our own folk to provide this type of information?
That's the, that's the plan.
But is that part of it specifically, or are we just going to assign people and go train the school, four schools, and get somebody to start doing the others or whatever? But when I look at it, it's kind of hard for me to understand four thousand dollars a day.
That's the going rate.
We don't have the support that way.
We don't, but then you will, you will not have someone qualified to do, to do the work. We've searched, Dr. Thomas can speak to this, but we've searched high and low all across the country over a multitude of different conferences, looking for someone who is first, A, qualified, and then B, has the skill set to, to work with us, and that is the, that includes the work and the, and his travel expenses as well. That, that is the going rate for consultants, it just is. And certainly, part of the, the work is that we become ourselves trained, so that over time, we can release the work with him and manage it ourselves. But until we are adequately equipped and prepared to do that work on our own, we, we need the support of an external consultant.
I will say, with this guy, so I know, Mr. Bailey, you went this summer to see him, when he came and met with the leaders. I did not go, however, at the conference that I presented at recently, which was a part of the National School Board Association, so it was people from everywhere, and my presentation was on Georgia's equity story. I mentioned this guy, and there were some people from New York, he's from New York?
Yes.
In, in my presentation, and they talked about how excellent he was, and how he really does this type of work and know the work. And we got to discussing, and when it does come to implicit bias and equity and all of those things, sometimes you can't have that done in-house, because people are not open-minded, and when you start talking about implicit bias, people, that's one of the things that people are really resistant at, because they don't want to be told that, I'm not fair to other people, or I'm not fair to people who don't look like me. That's a hard discussion to have, and so for some people, they take offense to it, so a lot of times you do have to have somebody outside doing the work. But I will say, in my presentation, those people from New York came to me afterwards, and they were like, he is excellent, so.
We, we found, we found people who are able to, to talk about the topic, and to do a keynote about the topic, but incapable of partnering with a system to lead us through the work, and, and he has demonstrated, both in person and in follow-up phone call conversations, as we've designed the plan, co-designed it, and, and, you know, he, he basically said, if you don't need the, if you don't need the days, then I won't come, I mean, he's only being paid if he, if he comes. If he doesn't, if we don't need him to, to come extra days in that contract, then he wouldn't come, and the price would, would decrease. But if this work is to start and to be led by, it needs to be led by someone who lives and breathes this work every day, as we learn from him to grow our skill sets, and eventually have our own model of the work, but we're not there yet.
And just to add to the comment, your question, Mr. Johnson, there's a lot of preliminary work that goes into the things that Mr. Selkis is going to provide for us, him reviewing the data, him looking at what type of trends, based on the needs assessment that he's going to conduct, to work with our leadership team and the school leadership team and staff to develop a plan for them, so even though he's here one day capturing information, he takes that quantitative and qualitative data back home with him, works out a plan. We're able to call him at any time, we have mentoring support that's available, that is not at an extra charge, he just charges us for his daily rate. So there are other services that come with us contracting with Mr. Selkis that may not necessarily show up in a daily rate, but it is shown in the proposal that he has shared with us for review.
Any other comments, questions?
I think it's excellent.
It was just the one hour, two hours I spent in the seminar, or work, work session, or whatever it was, it's called, was fantastic, I mean, it, it's, even for me personally, I was gleaned a lot of information, and, you know, you dig into yourself a little bit, even, like, it's, it's a, it's a serious deal.
It's a tough subject.
I'm, I'm, I do think it's a situation where you need someone that's been there, done that, and they're objective, to come in and make you think objectively. I'm definitely all for it, I think the guy's legit, I want to see his work now. Like, for him to come in and do a great talk, very engaging, that's, that's one thing.
Right.
I want to see this, I want to see how it affects our county and our community, because I feel like it's a, it has the potential to be a game changer, right? Like, this can be a, a field leveller, it could be a, an awakening for a lot of people.
Yes.
And, and everyone has it, which is the thing, it's like, we may think implicit biases, no, it's everyone has implicit bias, and it's one of the points he makes is, we all have it.
Yes.
And you won't get rid of all of it, but awareness of it is the, is the way out of it, right? To combat it, and to know where, where everybody's coming from. I love it, I love the idea. I'm all for it. I would love to know the four schools, I feel like I'm getting run around here, and there must be a reason why, but can we say who the four schools are?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, great.
East, I mean, I'm sorry, Eastside, Newton High, Fairview, and Herd-Mixon.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Item H?
Item H, the superintendent recommends the Chromebook laptop computer and services needed for select schools be purchased from Dale Marketing LP of Round Rock, Texas. The total cost will be a hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty cents. Rationale, individual schools are allowed the flexibility to use their allotted Title I funds in a way that supports and aligns with strategies identified in their Title I school-wide plan. Accordingly, select schools have chosen to invest in additional technology. The school system will utilize a State of Georgia contract to procure the equipment and services. The schools and their associated costs have been presented to you. Oh, what's it, the cost, oh, the, the costs will be paid for, from budgeted FY twenty, Title I Part A school allocations, and this item is aligned to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. And the funding source again is FY twenty Title I Funds Function one thousand, object code seven thirty-four. This concludes item H.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, may I have a motion, please, for H?
Submit.
Submit.
It's been moved in second, okay, any discussion or questions? Having none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Item I? You're gonna do it, okay?
I recommend that the board approve personnel items discussed in executive session.
Before we make a motion, may I ask the chair person, chairwoman?
Absolutely.
If we want to pull out part of this, we make a motion to pull out?
Whatever part you want to, so if it's something pertaining, just name the area, since we don't have numbers.
Alright.
So like, if it's transportation.
Sure, I'd like to do that, now can I do that? Do I need to do it prior to the rest of her talk, or do I need to wait till the motion's on the table?
No, you can make the motion.
Okay.
Because there's not a motion on the table yet.
Okay. Superintendent, may I make a motion? May I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Let's see. I'd like to take the superintendent's motion and split it, if we may. All of the personnel matters that we discuss at the beginning of our executive session as one, one complete docket, and then the exception, the one being pulled out would be the.
Transportation.
Personnel to deal with transportation, I'd like to pull that one out as a separate, as an item.
A separate vote is tied?
Yeah, okay, separate vote.
So, Mr. Bailey is making a motion to vote for all of the superintendent's report, her recommendations, with the exception of transportation, have that as a separate item. So there'll be two votes if approved, so is there a second to move that motion forward?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and we need to make a vote, all in favor for doing that?
Which one now?
We're, we're voting to just split them.
Okay.
So, is that what, is that right?
Uh huh.
Okay. Okay, then we're gonna vote for one and the vote two.
Yes, we need to make sure we could, we gotta split the recommendation first.
Just make sure I understand the motion.
Yeah. So the vote now is to split the recommendation.
Yes.
I need a yes to split the recommendation, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, all right. Ready for your next motion?
Sure.
You got it. So we need to vote.
Okay, then I'll now make a motion that we.
Take one at a time, do just the first.
Yes, the first section of personnel.
Which is?
The written part.
Which is all of it?
All of it minus the transportation piece.
Last discussion of transportation that we had.
Yes, that's the motion being made.
Perfect, so the motion on the floor is to vote for all of the recommendations now, except for transportation.
Correct.
May I have a second? Okay, it's been moved in second, so all in favor of the initial recommendations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, five zero, next motion.
The next motion is to recom, the.
To approve.
To approve the superintendent's recommendations as it pertains to transportation personnel.
Absolutely, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved in second, this vote is for the transportation portion, not the listed, just that separate item that we discussed.
Got it.
Okay, because there was listed transportation on the recommendation earlier.
Right.
All in favor for the recommendation in concerns to a transportation decision? Let me hear you say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I'm confused. We're voting.
To approve my recommendation for the transportation item, as a separate item.
And that's all?
Just that one thing, you already, you already proved.
I agree with the process of the recommendation itself.
You, right, you're just approving the, the recommendation for the, the transportation item, not the other part you already approved, everything else. Am I correct, Madam Chair?
That's right, this is just that one item we discussed.
Well, I don't know how to take care of it now.
Okay. So, so do I need to call for the vote again? Let me call for the vote again.
Thank you.
All in favor, let me hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, four one, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other matters of interest? Nobody has any? Okay. All right, if no one has any other matters of interest, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Submit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, median adjourned, seven forty-eight. Okay.